Good afternoon. My name is Manuel Camargo. This is a meeting of the Glendale Water and Power Commission. Today is Thursday, September 7th. And Madam Clerk, if we can go to the first item on the agenda, please.
One, Roco. Before I proceed with the Roco, Commissioner Venecia will not be attending today's meeting, and Commissioner Hale is running late.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Lau?
Here.
Commissioner Kadikian?
Here.
President Camargo?
Here. Next item, please.
Two, approval of the June 5, 2017 meeting minutes.
Very good. Okay, those were circulated in advance. Any comments on the meeting minutes?
Just under reports in item A, the Aliso Canyon update, just a typo. In the last line of that paragraph, the first word should be changed from "will" to "with." I'm sorry. It's an English major thing. I can't help it.
No further changes?
No further changes.
Okay, so with that change, if we can ask for approval, all in favor? Sorry, I should get a motion to approve?
I so move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Meeting minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Three, GWP Commission staff comments.
Mr. Zern, any opening comments for yourself?
Mr. President.
Very good. I do, so I want to welcome our newest Commissioner, Roland Kadikian. And Roland, appreciate your upcoming service on this commission. Any opening comments that you would like to make?
Just thank you for the introduction, and I look forward to being guided, as this is my first commission. Other than that, I look forward to serving, and I also want to thank Mr. Zern and his staff for providing the package, which I reviewed, so thank you.
Very good.
Very good.
Welcome, Commissioner Kadikian.
Thank you.
On that note, Mr. President, for Ms. Chan, as just a way of an update, we're hoping that we can have some recognition for her at our next meeting.
Okay.
It was dependent on some permanent recognition that we wanted to give her for her service, and so we had to order that. So I think it'll be ready, and if she's available, we're going to try to do it next month, October 2nd.
Excellent. Okay, very good. All right, and also let the record show that Commissioner Hale has joined us.
Good afternoon.
You look safe and sound, so thanks for joining.
I made it.
That's no easy task.
Oh, it's not. Okay, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
For A, Aliso Canyon update.
Mr. President, members of the commission, since our last meeting, there have been some developments at Aliso Canyon. In mid-July, the Southern California Gas Company received approval from the state to begin limited injections at the facility. This is essentially those reservoirs or storage facilities that have gone through the intense double-triple checking and had been cleared by the various state agencies. Almost immediately, the County of Los Angeles filed a lawsuit, which was then, in state court, the judge temporarily shut the facility down, pending a review, to which it went to the appeals court, and the appeals court overturned that judge's decision and allowed Southern California Gas to reopen. So in a matter of about 10 days, that all took place. So from about the 17th or 18th of July to the end of the month, 28th, 29th of July, that took place. And about the 28th or 29th, they began the injections again, and they've been injecting into the well since that time. Haven't heard anything other than that. We had a couple of notices from them last week, and I think primarily because we hit the two hottest days of the year on Thursday and Friday. It was just a general, let's all conserve, and there could be reductions in gas flow, so just be prepared for that. That never came to fruition. We all, I think, did our job as far as coming to conservation, but I think the gas supply was more than plentiful for us here in Glendale, for the basin, to get through that hot period. So that's it. There's been some talk that there will be more lawsuits coming. There's been some talk that there may be some more legislation coming. As you know, there was some legislation in Sacramento, still there, where they, this was, somebody member Stern, I believe, is tying storage requirements on utilities and using the Aliso Canyon as the impetus for doing that. So there is some language in there about fines for storage facilities that violate any of the regulations of the state, and it also is encouraging, in some cases, I think it started out, Mr. Hale may be very familiar with this, with putting a burden on LED WP that was pretty excessive, 100 megawatts of storage, and it was like a must, put this in, and I think they've negotiated some language on that. So it's down to pursuing storage, which I think we all are doing, certainly in Glendale we are, I know the city of LA is, but relaxing it to the point where it's a little bit more reasonable in how it's accomplished. That bill's yet to be passed, so we'll see how it all turns out. But that is Aliso Canyon as it stands. So it's back in operation, at least to some limited degree. It's relieved AR and the other utilities that receive gas deliveries from this area, from the basin, as far as supply, and we shall see where it goes from there. But as you know, we really never had any kind of a cutback. We never had any curtailment during last summer, the winter, or this summer. So we were able to survive as an individual utility, as was LA, as was Anaheim, as was Riverside, and all those others who take delivery from this area.
Thank you for that report. Any comments or questions for Mr. Zern?
I'm just curious, of course, in my case, the arrival of extreme heat coincided perfectly with the complete failure of our home air conditioning system, so I can tell you exactly how hot it was. And it certainly was extreme. I'm curious about, do you have a read on what the energy mix was that GWP was, you know, how much of our energy at that point was coming from Grayson, how much was coming from imports from LED WP? What was, I'm just curious about the mix, because it was such a marked event.
Very good question, Mr. President, members of the commission. We actually, Thursday, broke our all-time record. Friday, we broke that record. So our all-time peak was 343 megawatts. We did 345 on Thursday. We did 346 on Friday. Pretty likely, we would have done a lot more on Thursday. But we had a house fire that occurred, that impacted our lines, that caused what we call a bump, and we dropped off 40 megawatts right about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. If that would have stayed up, the temperature, and I say "temperature" because think of a thermometer going up, that's what the usage was going up. So we probably would have been closer to 355 and maybe even 360. So it was quite a day. So Grayson was running everything we could that day, and we had Unit 9 running, we had Unit 5 running, we had Unit 4 running, we had Unit 8 B and C running, and then 1 and 2 in combination with 8, B and C, and 4. So we had everything we could possibly give it from Grayson's standpoint. Transmission-wise, the transmission system stayed in pretty good shape, which is good. So we did not have any outages along the transmission line, either of our main transmission lines. So we were importing power of various types, and a lot lately of renewable, quite frankly. And we had also bought backstop power from the city of LA. So we had that power available. When I say "backstop,"
What is "backstop"?
It's just in case something goes totally wrong at Grayson, that we don't get hung out at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, or 2 o'clock in the afternoon, with nothing, and then when you call LED WP, it's almost not fair. I mean, you know, they're going to go, wait a minute, we don't have anything to sell at this time. So we pre-buy ahead. LA, I have to tell you here, generally is not a seller in Q3. That's been their policy, but they've always been very good to us, and generated enough to allow us. We certainly pay a premium for that power, but it is nice to be able to, as I say, have a backstop, have a reserve, and we pretty much used it all.
So when you purchase those, are those delivered electrons, or is that like an option?
No, it's delivered.
It's actually delivered power. Okay, so that means you back down whatever you, because you bought it already, so you backed down whatever you might have generated.
Likely, probably not buy as much.
Of course.
Yeah.
No, it is your last resort power, so it's...
Right, although, as you all know, with the situation we're in in Grayson, sometimes it's cheaper to buy it than it is to generate it here. That's the sad part. So it's just a matter of, it's hard to take Grayson down and then bring it back up because of its age, so likely, yeah, we just don't buy. So we'll use up the 40, in this case, it was 40 megawatts from LA.
Got it.
And how much megawatts were we getting from Grayson during the peak?
I'm not sure. I think we were probably getting about 30% maybe.
Thank you.
Generally, we were not going to do a whole lot more than 2025, but I think we were pushing, we kept everything on. Hey, you know, if something would have gone, it would have gone. At that point in time, there's not a lot you can do. We needed to keep the lights literally on, and with the fire situation. So then we have the house fire, which was bad enough, then we got a brush fire situation. So, yeah, it was quite a challenging weekend.
Were the transmission lines over Silmar, were they being affected by the fire that was going on there?
There were no transmission lines impacted for Glendale. In other words, the LA lines weren't impacted, all Edison lines. Those were Edison lines that you saw on TV, the ones that were under siege, so to speak, and they had to cut some of those. So Edison did lose some transmission as a result of that, but not through the LA Balancing Authority, which then means not detrimental to Glendale.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. President.
And you know, Ms. Lau, I can get you more definite mix if you're interested, but...
I'm curious, just because with the disruption in our climate, which we're now seeing play out nationally, internationally, and certainly here locally, we know that we're going to be seeing more extreme weather of all kinds, whether it's heavier, you know, extreme rainfall, whether it's unrelenting extreme heat, like the spikes of extreme heat. And so I'm just curious about how GWP responds in these extreme events, because sadly, I think there are going to be more of them.
It's very true, and I think that's one of the things that concerns us most about not having limited local generation, which is just something we can rely on and we control. You know, I think the market, there's plenty available in the market. The difficulty's always been getting it from wherever that market is to Glendale, and that becomes the difficult part.
And is that a financial constraint? Is that a physical constraint due to transmission?
Physical constraint that I don't, yeah, it's a physical constraint. And I don't know that there's, certainly no easy answer for us. I don't think there's an easy answer for the state, to be honest with you. The state bottlenecks in at least three different locations. So, for instance, both Thursday and Friday, you saw traffic that was tough. You know, there were certain agencies that were cutting back even more, that were thinking about, you know, rolling blackouts because the transmission was so clogged. So those are things we have to live with. We'll just have to figure out how best to work around that. It's not, that's not going to change. So we're going to have to figure out, you know, through the combination of local generation, local production, storage, all of the options that are available to us.
So comment and a question, I guess. So you spoke, Mr. Zern, of the strain from a generation perspective, right, and the value there of perhaps the repower of Grayson?
Correct.
But in extreme events like the, you know, setting new records here in the city of Glendale, is there also a, can you also speak to the strain that that puts on the distribution system on days like that, Thursday, Fridays?
Certainly, certainly. Any prolonged heat will put a strain on the distribution service, but I, the system. But I will tell you right now, if all of the infrastructure in the city of Glendale, that's the one I have the least concern with. We do have areas where, you know, we need to make some upgrades and some fundamental changes, especially when it comes to the transformers. You know, you run this hot, those transformers have no chance to cool down. Our biggest problem, and I think I may have told you this before, is, you know, 100-degree day isn't that bad. 200-degree days, 300-degree days, 400-degree days, that starts to get tough. The bad, the really bad thing, though, is when the nighttime temperatures only go down to 83 or 84 degrees. The transformers have no way to cool, because people aren't turning their air conditioners on. We figure the 70-degree is kind of the benchmark point. You get at 70 to 72, and anything below that, we're good. We know people stop turning off their air conditioners, opening their windows. Anything above that, you're going to run air conditioners all night. Then the system just takes a strain. That's when then you see the peaks hit at 5, 6, 7, and that's when you see transformers begin to fail. I can tell you, over this weekend, we did very, very well. We had some issues, probably had more issues with the fire than we did with just the strain on the system. But there's definitely some areas that we need to look at, especially on the substation level, and those are all targeted in our capital improvement program. But I'm proud of the distribution system. Again, that's something we have full control of, and our guys do a heck of a job of maintaining that system. But you're right, Mr. Camargo, it doesn't, you know, you can have the best system in the world, but you know, you have sustained heat and nighttime temperatures that don't drop, and you're going to begin to see the weak spots, you know, have a problem. But we did, we did very well. Again, that's a testament to the crews, our crews, who maintain that system.
Right, yeah, very good.
So has anyone ever done a cost-benefit analysis of adding a redundant transformer on some of the power poles where you do have the weak spots?
We do. Actually, that's a good question, because that's been done, it was done, it's been a while since the one I saw, and it was done on more of a regional basis, as people looked at it and thought. It was, they talked about two things, maybe adding transformers in intervals closer than they are, and also a backup situation. It was pretty expensive.
Not so much a backup, but you give them time to cool off, right?
Right.
So you just switch back and forth.
So you can switch back and forth.
Right, so that way you cool off half of it when you have these sustained days of heat.
And so it was, it was a little pricey, but, you know, and again, as you look at, what was the downside? You know, how many did we have fail? What was the impact on the residents? What would the impact on the residents be if we put 50 more transformers in to create this loop, this redundant loop, this backup system, if you will, that's my term. But we may revisit that. We also may revisit the issue of sizing of the transformers.
Yeah, but climate and climate change is going to have, you know, shift that cost-benefit curve, because your break-even point is going to change the more sustained days of heat that you're going to have, because that may obviate the need to, you know, add the redundancy, because if you're out there replacing them anyway, you're already incurring the cost. You're just taking broken ones out and putting new ones on, so...
There's always that theory of, you know, on replacement schedules and all of those kind of things. So we're in the process of initiating a equipment assessment and inventory, and from there, that will morph into a master plan, which will then tie into a capital improvement program. Likely, we'll put a 10-year program in place, and then, you know, we'll have it in probably three-year increments. Those are the ones you can easily bite off as you begin to budget ahead, and look at those. I think that's where we're going to be able to talk about those kind of issues of upsizing transformers, what about, you know, different configurations and wiring we can do at substations, and then, you know, the idea that, you know, giving those transformers an opportunity. And we'll see, you know, at the end of the year, we'll see how it goes. You know, it's definitely shifted time of year.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, we're getting heat waves as you buy your children Halloween costumes, which is, you know, something that's unheard of. But, you know, as, I think you're going to begin to see more August be warm, then end of July is going to be warm, September continue to be warm, and October, mid-October, let's call it. Remember, the hottest day we had last year was October 20th? So it was 107 on October 20th. So you're right. You know, the idea that, you know, you take a quick kind of peak beating in the summer, and then you cool down for the rest of the fall and winter and spring, and then come back hard, you know, you're right, that cycle has changed, so...
Yeah.
I think the master plan that we're conducting in the facility assessment will probably be where we can best address that.
Okay.
Good point, though.
I'm sorry, did you say when that master plan is expected?
It's just initiating, so it's going to be a while. I don't even have a timeframe at this point in time, so we're just beginning the process.
Sounds like very interesting stuff.
Yes, yes. We'll definitely bring those back to you and report. I think you saw when we brought Mr. DeGeados back on the water side, so we're going to do something very similar. And then, in fact, I think he's ready to do some update on his model now, so we keep that very current and very relevant.
Very good. All right, good discussion. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
For B, legislative update.
Good afternoon, President and members of the commission. My name is Silva Gullian, and I'm here to give you a brief legislative update today, starting with SB 100 regarding California Renewables Portfolio Standard Program: Emissions of Greenhouse Gases. This bill puts the state on a path to 100% clean renewable energy by 2045, and SB 100 was temporarily placed on the Assembly Appropriations Committee's suspense file, pending a review of fiscal impacts. And as of September 5th, it was read a second time and ordered a third reading. And currently, we are continuing to keep a close watch on this item, and we'll update you as soon as we get any more information. The next item I have is AB 1184 regarding vehicular air pollution incentives. And this bill requires the California Public Utilities Commission to establish the California Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, designed to incentivize the purchase of electric vehicles in California, including incentives to low-income households and incentives to investor-owned utilities for deployment of electric vehicle charging infrastructure. AB 1184, I'm sorry, was reported out of the Senate Appropriations Committee on Friday, September 1st. It was amended to delete the new incentive program language and to add an ARB reporting requirement. The concerns are the lack of a funding source and the potential that the bill could result in reduced low-carbon fuel standards credits. The bill has since been gutted, and we next expect the author to work on the amendments that could move the bill to the governor's office at the end of the session, and it will hopefully address the funding source and the other issues. Lastly, I have...
So AB 1184, is this a gut and amend where it's going to be something completely different on a different subject matter, or are they replacing the...
Well, Mr. President, members of the commission, they stripped the billion dollars out of it. So the billion dollars was for the incentive program, and that's really kind of where the rubber meets the road. And I know the governor and many members of the legislature were very disappointed with that, but it happened. It now goes to ARB for a review, and I guess that was sort of kicking the can down the road. That's my opinion. It goes to them for a review and an analysis. That's the part I think that they're referring to when they say it's been gutted, they took that billion dollars out of there. I think they're going to try to salvage the bill with some level of incentiveization, but it's pretty tough. I mean, you know, on the one hand, you look at SB 100, that's coming after electrical generation. On the other hand, you know, you want to electrify the transportation industry when the number-one issue in the world, in California and in the United States, is automobile emissions. That's it. That's the number-one contributor to greenhouse gas. There are no two ways about it. So to the extent that a state like California that has its share of cars, the ability for us to try to make that, especially in this case, as Silva mentioned, you are looking at low-income and disadvantaged households that we're going to make it even more, try to make it even more appealable to them. You know, this is an area that I think we need to concentrate on. This is not a single source. You're not going to go to one place and get what you need. You know, you're going to need to go to the oil and gas industry, as unpleasant as that is. You're going to need to look at the transportation sector, both the mass transit sector and the individual, personal transportation sector, too. So, you know, that's a long answer, Mr. Hale, but I think at the end of the day, I don't think it's going to be anywhere near what they had hoped it would be.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be more this sort of, let's take a look at it, and I'm guessing it comes back again, maybe next year.
Does the GWP have some sort of a correlation as to how much these new electric vehicles coming into the market are impacting the demand? The electric car market is relatively small.
Yes.
So there must have been some impact on the need from GWP, but as they come along, is like 1% increase causing 10 megawatts more, 20 megawatts more?
It's not been very significant in Glendale. What we'd like to do is to set up a more defined pricing system for EVs and segregation of the charging units, so that you can, one, lessen the actual direct impact on the system, and also set up, I think, a pricing system that in my opinion is fair, and does, in fact, offer incentives as well. Our pricing system is a little bit stale, let's put it that way. So I think that that's, you're going to see that coming forward in our next rate study and in part of our COSA system, and I think for us, that's going to address a lot of things. But right now, we just, we don't have that level of demand. We don't see it even from our public chargers that we've put in. So I think, you know, when you plan the system right, you can avoid some of those issues. But there are, you know, I know that there's places where they haven't thought that out very well, and they get, they will get tremendous impacts on the system in certain areas, in maybe a substation, it may be, you know, a particular aspect of the system. But it hasn't, it hasn't caused us any problems. In fact, we're quite the opposite. We're looking at ways that we can continue to build the electric vehicle charging infrastructure, you know, along with some level of incentive, and we do have some personal incentives for charging stations, but to the extent that it's sort of a, you know, build it and they will come kind of thing, that's what we're hoping. So as we begin to put more of those charging stations in, especially in our parking structures, hopefully we can get them into some of the street parking areas. We're looking at some things that LA is doing on pole-mounted chargers, which is kind of unique. Everybody thought that was a little goofy at first, but it seems to be catching on. I know LA is going to expand that program, so we're certainly going to look at it and probably try a couple here.
So that's happening both on the power poles and then also on the street lights?
Yes, correct. So, yeah, we're going to give that a try as well. So, yeah, we're encouraged to keep moving towards more infrastructure to incentivize the use of electric vehicles.
Do you have an image, Mr. Zern, in terms of the current charging infrastructure in the city of Glendale? You know, how much is it from private, like, you know, whatever grocery stores or landowners? IOUs, so 1184, and visions in part, you know, the investor-owned utilities, perhaps putting in charging infrastructure?
Mr. President, members of the commission, we don't have a specific count on all of the facilities, public and private. I can tell you that Tesla has been extremely aggressive, not just in Glendale, they're aggressive throughout the country, to be honest with you, but certainly in the southwest United States. They're looking to put in a pretty extensive facility in the Americana. I think they're going to look at other public parking areas to put those in, so they're really kind of the leader that's out there. I know that there are other corporations that are looking at putting chargers in as a standard part of what they do. I know Walmart's doing that. We don't have a Walmart here in Glendale, but there are other retail establishments that are doing that as well. We're trying to get that infrastructure count. We believe that, we think there's, you know, we know what's in the Americana, we know if there's anything in the Galleria, and we know what we have. And that's probably the, you know, the large part of it all. But we are going to try to see if we can get a better handle if there's other infrastructure out there. There's, to our knowledge, you know, even those areas we abut, there isn't any, at this time, any Edison facilities. But I imagine as they come through that northern part where you cross into Edison territory, that you'll begin to see some there. So... Well, we'll probably be back to you with some level of an EV update. I don't have a date. You know, we've aggressively put aside like 10 chargers a year, although I have to tell you, I would love to be able to put 10 chargers in a year, but then the building code comes into effect, and so we've got to honor all of the code issues, and so it's made it a little bit more difficult and challenging to put those in. So we haven't quite put as many in as we'd like, but we are still forging ahead and putting that in every year in our budget. But I think at some point will come and give you an overview of where we're at, talk about the pole-mounted, talk about some of the street charging that we want to do as well. Always a challenge when you're dealing with parking. EV spaces are generally treated as handicap spaces, so that, you know, consider that's two parking spaces. Parking's always at a premium, so it's tough sometimes for folks to get their head around giving up two spaces for an electric charging vehicle that, you know, nobody's there all the time, but I will tell you here, and, you know, we've got them in our Civic Center garage, we've got a fast charger out behind City Hall right here. We get some pretty good use out of it, I will tell you. And it isn't city vehicles and necessarily city employees. We're getting people that are coming in and using it from outside the city, whether those are business folks or our residents.
Okay, very good. Lot of discussion on 1184, so thank you.
No problem. Lastly... Lastly, SB 623 regarding water quality, safe and affordable drinking water. This bill establishes the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund in the state treasury and requires the state board to expend monies in the fund for grants, loans, contracts, or services to assist eligible applicants with projects relating to safe and affordable drinking water. On August 23rd, SB 623 was held on the Assembly Appropriations Committee's suspense file and is now a two-year bill, so we will continue to follow this in the following session. The legislature has one week until the end of its session. Tomorrow is the deadline to amend bills on both floors of the--and September 8th is the last day to amend any bills on the floor. They adjourn on September 15th, and the last date for the governor to sign or veto any bills is on October 15th. This concludes my legislative update to the Commission. We are watching all of these bills on an ongoing basis, and we'll be sure to return any information if anything changes in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Any final questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't have a meeting before the session closes. I guess we're close to second, but if anything happens with any of these bills, because they're very pertinent, SB 100 or water, I'll send you all an email and let you know. I know some of you are in the business anyway, and will probably know before I do what's going on, but we'll see, you know, what the final outcome of SB 100 is. It was, it had run into some roadblocks this morning and this afternoon, so we'll see. It appears that labor has turned on it, so we shall see how it all turns out.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
4C Water Division Consumer Confidence Report.
This is the highlight of the night.
Thank you, President Camargo, members of the Commission. My name is Michael DeGhetto, Chief AGM for Water, and I'm going to give our annual update on our consumer confidence report. And everyone should have a copy of the report itself as well, and you should have gotten, I think, in your bill or an email saying that you could request a copy as well. So, I'm going to, what I'm going to go over is aesthetics, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Consumer Confidence Report, water quality standards, disinfection, microbial contaminants, groundwater treatment, and then some concluding remarks, with some time for Q and A. So, from prehistory to the 19th century, really, if it looked okay, smelled okay, tasted okay, there was no immediate effects. People used the water, and that's how you, someone would determine that it was safe. And those were really the main criteria for water quality up until the connection was made, that small living organisms exist and could cause health problems. So, now, those original, I guess, aesthetics, we call them secondary standards, and then the primary standards are related to actual health effects. So, in 1974, Congress passed the Safe Drinking Water Act, and so that authorizes the EPA to set national health-based standards for drinking water. And it was amended in 1996, and it includes some things. Cost-benefit analysis has to be taken into consideration related to treatment and setting the standards. Regulations related to operator certification, so all the operators in the water system have to have specialized certification to operate the system. It includes a source water assessment program as well as the Consumer Confidence Report. So, the Consumer Confidence Report's an annual public report on constituents in the water, and it lists the constituents in the source water and water after it's been treated. And Glendale's water meets, exceeds all state and federal drinking water standards. And you can go to the website also and then download a copy of this year's CCR. So, water quality standards cover really acute, what we would call acute items, and then chronic or long-term items. So, acute things might be like viruses, like hepatitis polio, pathogenic bacteria like Salmonella, typhoid fever, Legionnaires' disease, cholera, and then protozoa, which could be dysentery, Giardia, and Cryptosporidium. And then safety or related to chronic items are more long-term, like irritation of the intestine, skin. Carcinogens are like a long-term or chronic kind of issue. And some of them, you know, they're still, because they are long-term, those are still under review, and there's like always ongoing science related to those things. And most of the focus of the new work is related to those chronic issues. So, to deal with, to deal with acute issues, disinfection's like one of the main treatments that's done. And that's what that is when we say disinfection. It's destruction or deactivation of the pathogenic organisms. So, it's not sterilization. It's not something like in a doctor's office or something like that. What we're trying to do is just make it so those pathogenic organisms can't hurt you. You know, they're inert or they're dead. And so, free chlorine maintains a residual of chlorine in the water, and that's one sort of disinfectant. And then chloramines remains what's called a total residual of chlorine combined with ammonia in the water. And the disinfectant residual is kept in the distribution system to deactivate any pathogenic organisms that might enter the system before it reaches the tap. So, after treatment, it's disinfected. So, it's disinfected from the wells, it's disinfected after treatment. The water that we receive from MWD is disinfected, but we maintain that disinfectant residual in case something was to enter the pipes, basically. So, we want to, we want to be sure that we deactivate anything or destroy anything that might get in the pipes after it enters our system. Or maybe it could even be airborne if something got in one of our reservoirs or things like that. So, we always maintain that residual in the system. And then, there's been some updates. So, there's a revised total coliform rule, and now there's a maximum contaminant level for E. coli, which is to protect against fecal contamination. So, the requirement for monitoring total coliforms and E. coli really has to do, we have certain sample points where we regularly have to sample for those things that are representative of what's in the distribution system. And we have to monitor that, take corrective action if we show that, we call it getting a hit, for one of those bacteria in the water. And part of those assessments include, if we get a hit out in the distribution system, we also have to check our sources to make sure that it's not coming in from any of our sources as well. And if that happens, there'll be public notification requirements, and there's specific language that if that happened, we would have to include in our CCR, our Consumer Confidence Report, to report to the public about those things. And then on groundwater treatment, and, you know, we have our Glendale Water Treatment Plant where we do groundwater treatment, and we have a couple of treatment processes there. One's adsorption, where we use granular activated carbon to remove solvents like TCE and PCE and things like that. And then we have ion exchange, which takes out metals like hexavalent chromium. And then also, we have, we can blend with imported water as like an additional barrier for anything that might be coming from those wells. And then, just in conclusion, so all of our water meets state, federal drinking water standards. And then, of course, you know, this, and I talk about this a lot, it's really our team, it's our operators, our water quality staff, our engineers that are always working on making sure that the water's safe and reliable. And then, of course, we've been on the cutting edge with some of the new treatment technologies and treatment studies, especially for the chromium-6 removal. So, that's my, that's my annual update on that report. And, you know, if you look in the report itself, it talks about basically all the contaminant levels, and then what levels were detected in the system, and it gives like a pretty good explanation. This is actually, if you're going to become a treatment operator and take an exam, this is a good study tool for that, because it gives you a lot of that information right in it, so. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I just want to add, Mr. President, that, you know, in a time when you see lots of mention in the press about the overall quality of water in America and the problems that people are having, we don't have those problems here, and that's doing part of the great work that Mike and his staff do. I mean, there's a lot to be said for how you keep your infrastructure up, what you do with your infrastructure, and, of course, how you treat and maintain your water system, and they do an outstanding job. We're extremely proud of them. And, you know, and this annual report is just a testament to the great work that they do in keeping our citizens safe and making sure they have quality, dependable water.
And I would just also, I would add and thank our communications folks, because I think our report looks really good. I see some other agencies, and it looks like an engineer made it, and definitely, we gave the numbers, and our water quality staff gave the numbers. We didn't make it look--
So, the message there is not only are we good, we look good, too.
Any comments for--
I just want to, just want to add that, maybe you should add, it tastes and smells good, too. That's good, too.
Yeah, and that's, you know, it's just that thing about the secondary standards. And so, I'm like, very, I can't say that. That's an opinion, right?
I see, okay.
I drink it all the time, and I think it tastes and smells good, but that's my opinion.
Very good, very commendable work. Thank you. I'm sorry, one question here.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of raise as a, just issue to keep tracking, that EPA seems to be reducing its standards in other areas of, you know, pollution control and things like that. And a lot of our policies are deferential to both the state and the federal government as far as water quality standards are concerned. So, I would just, you know, want for you to bring back to this Commission and to the Council, any kind of sliding, backsliding on EPA standards as far as water quality is concerned, so that we can make a policy decision here locally about whether we want to continue to defer to that standard.
No, it's a good point, and I think, just to use as an example of where we are versus where some folks are, is the chromium-6 issue that the city council took a stand on and maintained that stand.
Right.
You know, despite the fact that a standard was set significantly higher than what the city council had set, they maintained that, and now that standard is in question and being asked to be reviewed as well. So, we did it. We bit the proverbial bullet we had to there, and I think, Mr. Hale, that if we run into that somewhere else, I think that would be our recommendation, and I think Council would agree that--
Yeah.
You know, if the federal government decides to go a different direction--
Yeah.
--whatever direction that may be, we'll make sure that we do what's best for the citizens of Glendale.
I think that's excellent news. I would just add, this is a great report. It does look really good. Thank you. You know, I think we're all in agreement that you do wonderful work, and I have just a question. How did the recent fires affect your operations, if at all? And did they have any effect on water quality in terms of, you know, any ash or other debris getting into the system, clogging up the system? Were there any effects on your operations?
President Camargo, members of the Commission, there were effects to our operation, but it wasn't from that. So, you know, all of our, part of the surface water treatment rule, all of our reservoirs are covered, so there's real, there's very low opportunity for ash or airborne particles to get in there and contaminate it. But what we did work on is our staff came in, you know, the city activated its emergency operation center, and we had our, we had our operations staff on duty, and what we were doing was overriding our normal operation and having the pumps run instead of automatic run on manual, so we could fill our reservoirs in the city to have more water available for firefighting. And that was really the main effect for us. We had staff on duty all weekend. You know, we always have staff that take home their laptops that can monitor how the system operates, but we just had them come in, basically, and give coverage the whole weekend.
Okay.
They did a great job, and there was never a doubt on water delivery.
Right.
Mike did find a, an issue that we will deal with, though, and that is helicopter, aircraft fill-ups and--
Yeah, there's some places where the helicopters have, I call it a day tank, but it's a separate tank that's connected to the system, and what we do is we make sure when they're done that they disconnect it, so it's not, say, sitting there with some stagnant water, having it connected to our system.
We may make some improvements--
Yeah, so we're going to do a little bit of work on those.
Yeah, I understand that some of the water was coming as far away as Castaic.
And I think that's where the aircraft was filling it up, say, from the lake itself. There's a couple helipads near some of our reservoirs in the hills that, where they can also land a helicopter and then just fill up from a tank.
I think the larger aircraft fills up at Castaic because of the, just the size, and I think mostly these are helicopter-type units, which are a little bit more maneuverable.
Okay. So, really, the focus, then, was on preparedness for if the fire got worse and the need for water increased? That's what it sounds like?
Yeah, that was the main focus, yeah. There wasn't really any issues related to quality. And really, the fires didn't really get near any of our storage facilities or any of our pump stations.
Okay.
We put up, you know, we, in one neighborhood, near one of the pump stations, we put out one of our portable pumps. It's a diesel-driven pump. In case there had been electric outage there, we would be able to pump if there had been an outage, so.
Right. Okay.
And just for equal coverage on the electric side of the business, we did lose about 10 poles and a transformer in the fire area. So, our men have been working this week. They were up there last night till dark. They'll be up there tonight till dark, and we'll get it done. So, they, too, were camped in the hillsides, just prepared to cut circuits and aid the fire department where needed. As I often said to Mike and to some of our other staff, you know, our job is to support during the incident. Once the incident's out and the fire says it's okay, then our work really begins, is we go try to put things back together and then make improvements for the next incident that may occur.
If you find that there are any particular lessons learned from this incident, I realize it didn't penetrate that deeply into Glendale. It was really more in Burbank and the city of Los Angeles, but if you do find that there are any lessons learned, we would be very happy to hear about them here.
Sure, and it's normal procedure for us. In fact, we had a brief debriefing, if you will, today in our department, but it's standard procedure for the city. We'll go through that exercise, and anything that we saw that was either a coordination issue, an EOC issue, that's Emergency Operations Center, any kind of support that we think that we're missing on, we will make those improvements. That's one of the kind of standards of any post-disaster situation--
Yeah.
--to try to get every lesson you can out of that and make whatever improvements you need to be prepared for the next one, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. That's the reality of it. Whether it's the wind, it's the rain, it's mudslides or fire, it's going to happen, or God forbid, earthquake. Luckily, it's not hurricane.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. DeGhetto. Thank you, Mr. Zern. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Five Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The general manager may refer the matter to the appropriate staff for investigation and report.
Very good, thank you. I do have one card here. Is it Mr. Dan Brotman?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Commissioners. My name is Dan Brotman. A little over a month ago, I wrote a letter to the Commission with my concerns about the Grayson repowering proposal. I haven't received a reply yet. I hope to do so soon. In the meantime, I thought I would come and share a summary of my thoughts with you here. So, let me go right to the punchline on this. In my view, the plan to repower Grayson with a new 250-megawatt gas plant costing about $340 million raises some serious concerns, both financial and environmental. Let me start off with some of the financial issues. Firstly, the proposed facility is designed to produce more power than Glendale expects to use. Why we would overbuild at a time when the state is facing a power glut is beyond me, but the proposal clearly suggests that the city will need to find buyers to take off the excess power. Let me quote from one of the slides in the 2015 Council presentation, just to make that clear. It says, "By 20-- It says, "By 2020, 2050D portfolio relies heavily on market sales. Partner recommend it." The decision to overbuild, I think, is unnecessary and will put ratepayers at risk of market supply and demand fluctuations. Second, the proposal, I believe, is built on some outdated financial assumptions. They weren't wrong at the time it was put together, but I think they're wrong now. It uses a cost of carbon figure of about $37 a ton in 2035, which is a low-ball figure, in my view. Economists now, after the AB 398 extension of cap and trade, are modeling higher prices for carbon. The best estimates that I've seen are for prices that are probability-adjusted, more like $60 a ton out to that date. And we could possibly be looking at prices of $100 a ton by 2035. So if that were brought into the financial analysis, we might see a different result. At the same time, the proposal assumes that the cost will be amortized over 30 years. But we know, and we just heard a few minutes ago, about the legislature getting ready to vote on SB 100, which would put California on the path to 100% clean electricity by 2045. It has moved out of the appropriations committee. It's come off the suspense file so that it will go for a floor vote. There have been one or two amendments proposed. I know of one today that was proposed. But I'm confident, and I think it will be passed. And if it does, we're really looking at a useful life of maybe, depending on how long it takes to build the plant, maybe 23 years, but certainly not 30 years. And I believe, you know, a more honest reckoning there would make this proposal a lot less attractive. Finally, we've seen dramatic technology and market changes since 2015, when the proposal was first made. Prices for wind and solar, as you all know, have declined sharply and are expected to keep falling, particularly solar. At the same time, battery storage technology is coming of age. Battery prices still relatively high but falling fast. I believe the proposal made short shrift of these types of clean energy alternatives. Writing them off as not ready for prime time. I don't think that was entirely true, then. It's certainly less true now. All of this, I think, really undermines the conclusion that spending $340 million on a mega-plant is the financially sensible solution for Glendale and that greener alternatives don't make sense. In fact, I believe building a large gas plant at Grayson is financially irresponsible and likely to burden Glendale ratepayers for decades to come. Now, the environmental questions, we could spend a lot of time on that, which we don't have. So I'm not going to get into a whole discourse of climate change, and I don't think I need to. It's obvious to any thinking person that something is changing, and it's not for the better. We've seen Houston, and now we have Irma and a few other hurricanes right on its tail. Closer to home, we know California's heating up. We just felt that. It's drying out. It'll likely bring more fires like the ones we've seen. This is serious business, and I think this needs to be priority number one, certainly a much higher priority than was placed on it in the 2015 report. That wasn't five minutes, was it? Anyway, on environmental grounds alone, I think we should question the need to build this new gas plant that will be spewing carbon into the atmosphere for many decades. Was that five minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman.
Okay, thank you.
Question for you, Mr. Brotman.
Yes.
Or maybe question for others on the commission. Have you seen, have you received a letter? Have you received a letter?
Mr. President, members of the commission, this is an email. And I sent you a response to that email. I didn't know that Mr. Brotman was looking for each of you to respond to him. We have responded to Mr. Brotman on that same subject several times, both my office and the city manager's office. I will be glad to do that for you again and CC you a copy of it because the information is right along the lines of what I had sent back to you in what was said. So I'll respond for you. I didn't realize he was expecting a response from you all since staff had given several times responses to those.
I would certainly be up and having a dialogue with you.
Can I say something about that? I wasn't necessarily expecting a response from all of you. But when we met together with Councilwoman Divide, you said that you were going to be sending me a letter. That's what I'm referring to, and I haven't received that letter.
I don't remember saying that, but, you know, well, I'll dig up the letters we've sent, and I'm not going to debate here about that. I mean, I think the time's up, and I'll be happy to answer some of the issues there. We've responded. We will continue to respond. If there's a letter we somehow missed, I'll send another letter in response.
Appreciate that, Mr. Zern. Councilmember Hale?
Councilmember, you just got promoted.
You got a promotion.
I didn't ask for that promotion.
I'll vote for you.
Thanks. Well, no, I would be happy to open a dialogue and discussion with you offline and kind of hear out your concerns. What is your background, by the way?
I'm an economist. I teach at Glendale College.
Oh, okay.
And just a concerned citizen. Been trying to bone up on these issues over the last several months.
So I'll have a few more thoughts to share when we get to our agenda forecast discussion, I think, on this issue. But I, you know, speaking for myself, I don't think that this commission has kind of adequately had a thorough conversation about the future of Grayson, at least not to my satisfaction. So I would look forward to having that discussion at some point in the future.
And you will in the near future, but at this point in time, we don't have the details to bring you, but you'll see them at that time when we bring them to you and then get ready to bring them to the council.
Very good, okay.
But in response, if you're interested, you know, it's up to you, Mr. President, to some of the comments that were made. Because I think it indicates, so let's put these things in perspective. Mr. Brotman refers to a 2015 IRP, Integrated Resource Plan. Most of you, I think we're here to see a presentation on that. That makes some suppositions. It looks at different options, and it comes up with what the ultimate plan is. It never in there said anything about short-shifting any kind of renewable energy, much less solar. We are out on a daily basis looking for deals. We've consummated deals on that, and we will continue to move forward to meet those. I'm not sure, are we done?
Yeah. I'm not sure if I should say this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for now, that, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Brotman. I appreciate your interest in this topic and spending the time to share your views with us tonight.
And there'll be more opportunities as we look at this, at both this level and at the council level as well. So never did we give that any kind of short shift. I don't know where that notion comes from. We will continue to move forward to meet whatever mandate there is of the state. Today, it's 50% by a certain period. If it's tomorrow or by the end of this session, 100% or 60% RPS and 40% clean energy or non-carbon energy by 2045, we'll do it. We will do it. We've met our deadlines to date, and we expect to continue to do that. We feel that an integrated plan, and it's important to remember that, an integrated plan, which includes, at this point in time, a level of gas generation to support that, is critical. But we'll get into more of that as we talk about the repowering and some of what our portfolio is. Battery storage, we certainly have. We're one of the few public agencies that has a battery storage facility in operation. We just put that in this year. We have 40 megawatts planned for the Grayson repower. So the notion that we have not considered that, or again, gave it short shift, forgive me if I don't use the exact words, that's just not true. That has been, from day one, a plan to incorporate battery backup at the facility to begin to transition us into the new world, if you will. So that's there. Cap and trade is something that Mr. Brotman continues to talk about. Yes, it was in the IRP as they were looking ahead to... Cap and trade's not new. What recently occurred is an extension of the cap and trade program. So we've been under the cap and trade program for quite a while. But the notion that it was projecting market costs, it's just that, it was projecting market costs. I think, Mr. Hale, you probably, as much as anybody knows, that the markets didn't come out quite the way that the legislature and the governor had hoped. I can tell you this, we've never paid one dime of carbon in the city of Glendale. And I don't anticipate that we will. So it could be $30, it could be $40, it could be $100. I don't anticipate the GWP will be paying for that. Why? We have bank credits. Why? Because the market is very good right now to buy them and bank them and hold them. So we've got those credits available. We get a certain number of free credits that do not ever retire. And so that as those credits begin to decrease, we begin to increase our renewable and carbon-free. And so we anticipate that that's going to find the point where we're going to be in compliance with the law and not have gotten, you know, penalized by the cap and trade or the carbon program because we're doing what we're supposed to do. Those who aren't, those who remain heavy on coal, you know, they may have a problem getting to that same position. You know, I think the term we use, not ready for prime time on the IRP, obviously, 2015, a lot changes. That 2015 IRP was based on the projection of what might come out at 350. It hadn't passed yet. But we were pretty good. We knew most of the skeleton of that, so we put that in there. Now we have SB 100 pending, and I think, I agree, I think in some form, it will be passed. Will it be this year? Will it be next year? It doesn't matter. I think it gets passed. So I think, and I think fundamentally, what's in that bill is what's going to be there when it does get passed. So our IRP process, revision process, is already underway, and we'll take a look at that and incorporate all of what has changed into that document. The financials, I could spend a lot of time here. I'm not going to do that because I'm going to wait until we actually bring you the financials, and then we can have that conversation where you can see actual numbers and see how this all pans out. You know, it's just, you look at a number and you extrapolate that number and say, this is going to be, you know, a debacle. You have to understand where we're at now and what it costs us now. You have to understand what the heat rate values are. You have to understand what the monumental effort it takes every single day to keep the lights on. And I can't emphasize that. Some of you know well what that effort is. And the men and women of this department who do that are nothing short of amazing. I know sometimes you're not always happy with us. I know sometimes maybe our bills, you know, are not quite where you'd like them to be. But I think, you know, by and large, the effort to do this is nothing, you know, short of amazing. And so to simply say, we just buy some batteries and you can solve that problem, is not going to do it. Can we get there? Absolutely, we can get there. We can get there. Have batteries come down? Not that much. We just bought them. We just bought some, so I know that pretty well. We've also priced them. I've got three companies that we're talking to now, so they haven't come down that much. Can we buy more solar? Absolutely, we're looking at that. I got to figure out again, remember what we talked about earlier? How do I get it here? How do I get it to Glendale? Certainly, whatever option there may be to produce it in Glendale, but, you know, you put on, you put on a, you know, it on a scale that we need, we just don't have the sheer land to do that. So we're going to have to go outside somewhere to bring it in, and then we have our transmission limitations. How much we can free our transmission up to bring in nothing but renewables? That's an objective as well. We have local generation here. We don't have to worry about transmission. We don't have to worry about the city of Los Angeles to be dependent on them. And all of that transmission we have, that is, you know, not as much as we wish we had, but it's what we have, we can then turn around and use that to bring renewables in from the Southwest. So there's, again, let me emphasize that, integrated plan. And it doesn't all pivot on one thing. But what we need to do is to bring that into perspective with where we're at on the Grayson repower. We'll talk a little bit about that on the second because you'll have the environmental, although that's probably, you know, a little premature, is we get probably closer to the end of the year when we were able to talk to you a little bit more about specifics and hopefully, right after the first of the year, talk about economics. So you can see that.
Very good.
Just had one small question, and this is just for my education. The credit that the GWP gets for carbon, is it by ton or by dollar figure?
By ton.
So it doesn't matter the dollar?
They translate it into dollars because it has to be put into a dollar figure. So there's a market, and then there's an auction market. So it auctions every, the state auctions it every November, although they can call an auction at any time. The auction hasn't been quite as successful as they had hoped, but carbon is probably running around, I'm going to say, somewhere around the $15 a ton area. As you know, you may know, I'm sorry, you may not know, it's got a $50 a ton ceiling. It did not have a floor. However, the new cap and trade put a floor in it. So I think you're going to see it graduate from about $16, $17 a ton. And then I believe they're anticipating that the next auction may be fully subscribed. Auctions have never been fully subscribed. And, you know, there's a lot of issues. There's folks in this world who do this for a living, you know, that trade commodities for a living. They've gotten in on this, and we've dealt with them on buying and trading carbon and renewable energy credits as well. So, you know, it is a per-ton basis, but there is a cash value that gets assessed to that and really, kind of say, in an auction market, so what's the best price I can get for it? But right now, it's running, I'm going to just say, $15 a ton.
Right, but if we say Glendale has, at this point, would I say, has 10 tons of carbon credit or 10,000 tons of carbon credit? Is that what we, the way you would have your figures on your books, or would you have to translate it to dollar figure?
You do have to translate it to a dollar figure if you're going to trade it, but it is on a ton basis. So I could tell you, and I would give it to you if you ask me in a tonnage basis. So I'd say, here's what our annual tonnage requirement is, and here's how many credits that we have, and we cover our credits. It's only, you only monetize it when you go into the market to buy and sell.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that background, Mr. Zern. So with that, Madam Clerk, I have no other cards at my station. Do you?
No, I do not.
Okay, very good. So next item on the agenda, please.
Six, agenda forecast.
So...
Commissioner Hale?
Thank you. I think that, you know, we've already kind of discussed at length that we're going to have the Grayson repower on the October 2 agenda, so that should be reflected.
We're going to have the environmental draft.
The DEIR, right, right. And that includes alternatives, right? So that's not just a project? Or is that for the proposed project that GWP wishes? Okay.
So it'll be the proposed project at both GPP, that's Grayson Power Plant, and we'll also talk to you about the biogas repowering. They're two separate projects.
So I guess my only request is that our agenda be flexible enough that it allows for us to have a discussion about the rejected alternatives that led to the proposed DEIR so that we can have a conversation about why GWP staff decided to go with this alternative and why this made it to the DEIR.
Okay, we had gone over that in the IRP, but I can bring that back and talk about it again.
Yeah, and that's still the 2015 IRP, right? So that was...
Still the 2015 IRP, and we still feel it stands.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm not, you know, suggesting that we should...
But we can go back over it.
Yeah, and that's, I would, I mean, if we're going to open up the conversation about Grayson, I think my preference would be to have a wide-ranging conversation about what led us to Grayson.
And that was my hope as well. That's why I wanted to get a little bit more information and have it then as a separate item. I mean, this is simply a draft environmental document that somebody had asked for an update on. We'll give you that update. It's going out at the end of this, it'll go public at the end of this month, first part of next month. But what I was trying to do was to build a bigger presentation to bring back to you. I could start it with the IRP and then go into where we're at.
I think that's entirely appropriate, given the circumstances of...
I don't think I can do it on the second, though. How about if we get it in November?
What is the timeframe for the...
Well, I'm just, I can't get it by the second. I can't put that report together because there are some other competing issues for the council that I need to take care of.
If I may, so I believe the IRP is, I mean, excuse me, the EIR is slated to be issued in October, I believe, early October. And there is a plan in place to have a community meeting later in October to discuss the IRP, the E, I keep calling it the IRP, the EIR, which would be not before this commission, but it would be a community meeting to which this commission would be invited where the plan is to discuss all the alternatives and get community feedback regarding the EIR. So I don't know if this Commission would also like to have a presentation as well, or if that would serve the purpose of discussing the alternatives.
Well, I think that's one issue. It sounds to me like the desire is to have a report to this Commission, and quite frankly, that was my desire, is to bring you a report to this Commission, to this body.
Correct. Yeah, community meeting will be...
Is sort of gravy on that. You can also obviously attend those.
Well, I'm fine having the DEIR update, provided that we have the wider-ranging conversation about alternatives following the community meeting, maybe at our next meeting in November. I mean, if that is...
That's what we'll shoot for, is whatever's pleasure.
And so that, so it goes to my question, which is, what is the timing for that EIR? Is this part of a sequel process?
Right.
So the sequel process, then, is really about, perhaps to your point, Commissioner Hale, that, about the alternatives, right? So the sequel process is looking at, however you want to think about it, the best alternative from an environmental perspective?
Correct.
Or perhaps the least harmful alternative?
Correct.
So it's all about alternatives. So I do support the concept of speaking to alternatives. But there must be a timeframe associated with the completion and finalization of that environmental impact report. What is that timeframe?
It's a 45-day public review period, so...
So our meeting in November is firmly within the comment period of the DEIR.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, but if the DEIR were released at, did you say, the end of September?
First part of November, first part of October.
Okay. So if we meet in the first part of November, we're slated to meet on the 6th, yes, we would be coming up toward the end of that 45-day comment period.
That's correct.
But it's within the band.
It would still be within the 45 days.
Right. Okay, fine.
So I personally am comfortable having a presentation strictly about the DEIR and the release process. We'll also have the benefit of your feedback from the community meeting at our November meeting. We'll have a follow-up conversation then.
And of course, if there's any conversation in next month's meeting, we'll record that and document that as well, so...
And the public meeting associated with this, and later in October, as you characterized it, has that been, has that been...
I have not scheduled that yet.
Time, date, location?
No.
I apologize.
Do not have that yet.
So you don't have, so, I'm sorry, so you don't have it here, or it has not been scheduled?
It's not been scheduled.
It's a little early to schedule it, probably. They need to make sure the document, exactly which day the document's going to be published. Sorry, I still have smoke in my lungs, and I have a smoker's cough after the fire. But I think they need to make sure that the published date is hard before they schedule the community meeting, to make sure that that aligns with the 45-day comment period.
Correct.
So back to the agenda forecast. Anything else?
Do you want to keep talking about Aliso Canyon unless something changes?
Any interest in...
We can put it as a, if something changes, we will bring it back, kind of thing.
Sure.
As of now, I don't see anything, if something changes with the courts, or something changes with the regulatory...
Legislation or something, yeah.
Yes.
Something that would affect that.
Long as it stays status quo as of today, I'll assume we don't need to update that.